We'll call this meeting to order, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for December 26, 2018. Roll call, Ms. Stefan.
Leyland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Magsman.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as proposed, there's a minute.
Second.
Moving to second any discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Public comments, anybody from the public? I don't see anybody from the public. Claims and payments, resolution to approve expenditures for the county.
The county's expenditures this week total $279,536.81.
Motion to approve?
Second. Moving to second any discussion. This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Resolution to approve expenditures for Country View Care Facility?
Country View's expenditures this week total $591,024.24. This includes the October and November benefits and payments to the county. They have approximately $826,000 in their account.
Motion to approve?
Second. Moving to second, any discussion on this item? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the receipt project updates from Department Heads and Elected Officials. Moving on to minutes approved for December 18, 2018. So moved. Second. Moving to second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have a hearing at 9:05 on budget amendment for fiscal year 19. We'll do that at the end of the session. Consent agenda by resolution? Second. Moving to second, any discussion on any of the items? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the contracts and agreements, this is a resolution that the lowest responsive bid received from Peterson Contractors Incorporated, Ryanbeck, Iowa, letting held December 18, 2018 at 10:00 a.m., where the Wopsey Bridge replacement on C-57 Wopsey Road over the Cedar River with a bid of $4,65,432.61 be approved for award as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer. So Catherine?
Good morning, Board, Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. As you know, we did, the DOT, Iowa DOT, did open bids on this project. We received, the DOT received four bids. I felt it was good competition, the bids were very good. The lowest bidder was Peterson Contractors Incorporated at the little over $4 million. Our engineer's estimate put together in September was $5,906,000. So we were considerably under that with the PCI bid. So I would like to recommend that you accept their bid and award it to them, and then we will get the contracts from the DOT and start that process. And then these will be the contracts that all have to be done digitally now. The DOT wants everything by electronic signature now, so we'll be setting that process up for the Chair. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you, Kathy.
Second motion.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution that the fee schedule between Blackhawk County and Unity Point Allen Occupational Health for pre-employment testing services be approved and direct the Chair to sign for same as recommended by Deborah Bunker.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion on this? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution that the Second Amendment Amendment to the Agreement between Blackhawk County and Blackhawk County Nursing Realty LLC successor by assignment to Pretoc Capital LLC for the conveyance of Country View Care Facility be approved in a many amount of money to be deposited into the escrow account to be used by the buyer for capital expenditures from $400,000 to $650,000. So moved.
Second.
Moving to second, discussion.
Susan, can you give us a little overview of the reason for this increase?
We had, after they did their property condition inspection, we had further negotiations with the buyer and arrived at an amendment of the $650,000 for them to use for capital expenditures. Eric, do you want to?
I believe this represents the third price reduction slash or increase into the escrow account.
Morning.
Morning. So Susan is correct, they had an architect engineer group go through the building and noted improvements that they would like to make. Some of those were, a very small portion were immediate type improvements and others were more long-term. That total was about 1.6 million. You know, as we pointed out to them, that they originally offered that we should split that. As we pointed out, they knew all along this was not a new building, and some of those were just long-term capital expenditures that you know that you're going to deal with over time. And so we were able to negotiate their request from 800 down to an additional 250. Mr. Schwartz, to answer your question, it's the Second Amendment, there was a pre, we renegotiated prior to entering into this, so you're right, there were three, but it's really just the Second Amendment to this. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
No.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution that any and all closing documents in furtherance of the conveyance agreement to effectuate the sale of Country View Care Facility be approved, executed and signed by the Chair. So moved.
Second.
Moving to second, discussion. This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Before I, I just wanted to note that the company unfortunately chose to wait until days before Christmas to let people know whether they're keeping their jobs or not and to break the news of the big pay cuts that people are receiving and the massive increases in their insurance premiums. And so it's really unfortunate that they chose to wait for so long and break the bad news at such a bad time for families.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Any other discussion? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
No.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Other bids, this is a resolution that the statement of completion of the final acceptance of work in a construction payment estimate report for projects on the North Elk Run Road on Waverly Road be approved direct to Chair to sign for same, the amount of final payment of $30,000 with total project cost of $2,349,863 recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer. Good morning again, Catherine.
Good morning. As you know, these two projects were tied together under DOT letting. Aspro was the bidder on the work. They were 5% under the contract costs, and both projects turned out very nice, very smooth roads. We also reconstructed the Donald Elk Run Road intersection with this project. That will be a big improvement for the coming years. We replaced it with an improved, longer-lasting, more durable asphalt. And then on Waverly Road, I also wanted to note that there is now a three-foot wider roadway to facilitate more different modes of transportation in that corridor. So overall, we've gotten a really good project, and I recommend you approve this so that Aspro can receive the advantage.
Second.
Moving to second, any further discussion? Thank you, Kathy. Didn't we get, is that one of them, we got an award for the smoothness too? Was that the road?
That was the Zeneta Eldor.
That's right. Okay, thanks Kathy. But it is smooth.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a motion at the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Karen Dahl, County Social Services CO, Chief Operating Officer be approved and direct the Chair to sign for same, purchase one laptop docking station and two monitors for at a cost of $1,521.97 from CDWG. So moved. Second. Moving to second, any discussion on this item? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is a motion at the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted to Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer be approved and direct the Chair to sign for same, purchase of one overhead door and opener at a cost of $4,500 from Overhead Door Company.
So I've sent you several emails and photos about the existing condition of the store. We believe it is original, it's at least 48 to 50-year-old door. Unfortunately, one of our employees did, was backing out of the wash bay with the box was still out, and it struck, the truck struck the opener. It damaged the opener and also the track, so it wasn't our FY20 funds to replace the whole door and the opener assembly. We would like to purchase it now out of funds that have been unspent in our capital items for FY19. So that's why we're asking that the money come from the FY19, unspent capital monies, and we would take it out of our FY20 budget then if we're able to purchase it now. Can I answer any questions?
That, I asked the question the other day, never did get an answer. That wasn't bond money?
No, this-
It was just out of your capital.
Correct, yes.
Did you get bids on this, or?
We called several vendors. We did opt to go with overhead door because we've, they were able to install it right away. We use this door every working day to drag in and out of the wash bay.
Motion and second. Move to approve?
Second.
Moving to second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, a resolution that the taxes on submitted properties be abated under 445.16, Code of Iowa Blackhawk County Treasurer has determined that it is impractical to pursue collection of the total payment, payments due through the tax sale and personal judgment remedy and has little recourse for collection of taxes- So moved. -in the amount of $2,489.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion on this item? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution that the appointments of Brad P. Walz as Deputy Attorney effective January 2, 2019 be approved and direct the Chair to sign for same as recommended by Brian J. Williams, Blackhawk County Attorney. So moved. Second. Moving to second, any discussion on this item? Brian, anything you want to add to this?
No, just that it was supposed to be on last week.
Thank you.
Thanks.
This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is discussion, possible board action, Blackhawk County's catastrophic illness section of the sick leave policy.
And I placed this on the agenda on Friday, and so I know everyone probably hasn't had a chance to even see it, much less talk about it, so that's why I had it on for discussion. But as we all know, the exception that we made last week certainly was a good exception with people's best intentions to share their vacation and sick leave and part-time off with an individual, someone, a coworker. But right now, we have some employees that could only use vacation time and others that could use vacation and sick time and PTO. So I wanted to ask today what your thoughts are about asking that the policy be reviewed by the Policy Review Committee and make sure that it is fair and equitable to all employees and then all people can be helped and would be helped in the same way and have the same options. So that was just my question or my ask for today, that I would like to probably make a motion on that, that they would review it as soon as possible and come back to us with any suggestions or recommendations and maybe improve it or maybe not, but to make sure that it is fair and equitable to all employees.
I don't think we need a motion, just have policy, look at it.
No.
Just have policy-
Review.
Maybe review it. Deb, you're on policy too, aren't you? So HR can review it, take it to policy, and we can decide whether we want to bring them back to the board.
Well, hopefully they'd make a recommendation back to the board, at least of what their thoughts are on it. You mean, and I know you're on that committee as well. Chris, I think you are too.
I think it will be for this next year. Yeah, I'd like to see us review it and bring it back to the board so everybody's have up to speed on it on the same page, because it's, I certainly want to make sure that we're doing the compassionate thing with our employees, but that we're doing it the same across the board. And so if we need to amend the policy so that sick leave is eligible, then that's what we need to look at just across the board.
I'd say make it as simple as possible.
Yep.
It's really, what, three times now in the last 10 years?
No, three times in the last year and a half.
It hadn't been that many.
Yeah, three times in the last year and a half, and there probably could be a fourth one shortly.
Well, let's have policy review. Deb, you can get one together and after the first of the year.
So we'll just move on from that one, I guess.
Okay, so Debbie, would you please do that then, and as far as call that meeting fairly soon? I'd like to do that as soon as possible since we have some pending issues out there.
Try to get something together in January.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Next, the resolution to recognize the contributions of Country View employees and to express our appreciation for the years of service. This is a resolution to recognize the contributions of Country View employees and to express our appreciation for the years of service, whereas the employees of Blackhawk, or Country View Care Facility have performed compassionate, efficient, and exemplary service to residents of Country View for many years, and whereas Country View employees will no longer be county employees at the facility, passes from county ownership to private ownership, and whereas the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors is grateful for the service of these employees to Blackhawk County as an employer, to the citizens of Blackhawk County in fulfilling their public duty, and especially to the residents of Country View as people in need now therefore, we hereby resolve by that Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors take this opportunity on December 26, 2018 to express our gratitude, appreciation to the Country View employees for the service and dedication, and to recognize these employees and their years of service individually as follows. We've got, we've got two 40-years, we got about 10 over 30-years, another 20 over 20-years, and several over 15 to 20-years, and it goes down to a lot of long-term, a lot of good long-term employees. So with that, I'll adjourn to the resolution. So moved. Second. Moving to second, any just further discussion on this? Anybody like to expand on them? Okay, this is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution that the 2019 supervisors, boards, and committee assignments be approved.
So moved. Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Were those all correctly?
Yeah.
Okay. This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a motion that the travel requests submitted by Debbie Bunker, Human Resource Director, be approved and direct the Chair to sign for same, $2,000 to attend a National Public Employer Labor Relations Association in Scottsdale, Arizona, scheduled for April 7 to the 11th. So moved.
Second.
Moving to second, discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to approve and any place on the file, the 2019 legislative issued priorities submitted by the Urban County Coalition. So moved.
Second.
Moving to second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution to retroactively approve the Medicare enrollment application for the Country View CMS 855A.
This was just a form that we needed to complete for the transfer of ownership that we had signed last week, so we're just-
Right.
So moved.
Second. Moving to second, any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a motion that the appointment of Wesley Pilkington as a member of the Blackhawk County Board of Health be approved effective January 1, 2019.
So moved.
Second. Moving to second, discussion on this item? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, a motion that the appointment of Michael Bonzer as a member of the Blackhawk County Conference Surveillance Board be approved effective January 1, 2019. So moved.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is a 9:05 hearing, it is now 9:23, on the proposed FY budget amendment, motion received and placed on file, proof of publication of notice of public hearing. So moved.
Second.
Moving to second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received and placed on file. Any written comments?
So moved. Second.
There are no comments on that.
Thank you, Ellen.
We just have two amendments that we're doing, one for the Health Department where we are reducing both revenues and corresponding expenditures for the Waterloo School Nurse Contract, it's just a little over $1,054,000. And then the other one is to increase capital projects expenditures, and this is due to the timing of our capital projects, our bonded projects, that we had anticipated finishing in FY18, but that carried over into FY19. And so that is a total of $1,372,881.
You repeat that again, please.
The capital projects increase is $1,372,881, and that's just a carryover of the bonded projects.
Motion to close the hearing? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution that the fiscal year budget be amended by changing previous revenues and expenditures on file with the county auditor. So moved.
Second.
All in favor, or this is a resolution, please answer your name as called. What about that?
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution that the Finance Director be directed to increase or decrease appropriation to various operating budgets for fiscal year 18, 19, for offices that submitted as shown upon the records in the Office of the County Finance Director, with such changes being made in accordance with 331.434.6 of the Code of Iowa.
So moved. Second.
Moving to second, discussion on this item? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Any reports or information from the board? Mr. Magsman, you have the floor.
Thank you. First off, I guess I'd like to thank the citizens of Blackhawk County for allowing me to serve over the last 12 years. It's been a distinct pleasure on my part to be part of Blackhawk County Government. I think some of the things that I feel has been important for what we've done is look at safety issues. I think if we look at the Cedar Wopsey Road, that was continually sites for very severe accidents and deaths there, we've been able to work with state and federal government to address that. We've also placed a roundabout in, in a location here in Blackhawk County where there was numerous accidents and fatal accidents, particularly when we look at our public safety, doing the upgrade to our radio system, I think is definitely a safety issue for public safety, both the law enforcement, fire, EMS. So those areas, I think, have been, we've taken a lot of steps, these by no means, all of them that we've taken, but I'm not going to get into the day-to-day operations of what we do. I think we faced a lot of issues when it came to the floods of 2008, and we had many of our buildings, facilities that were damaged during that time. We took steps to mitigate those situations within our buildings and relocated facilities outside the flood plain. So I think those are long-term. We bought properties out, property acquisition, so those would no longer be issues when it comes to flooding and finding funds to relocate individuals. So we worked on that, during that process, we replaced, I think, three bridges over the Cedar River, the two bike trail bridges and the Brandon Road Bridge, and we replaced the bridge in Finchford also, and now we're going to replace the bridge here coming up in, at Cedar Wopsey, crossing the Cedar River. Those significant expenditures and our long-term issues that address the needs of the public, so. The energy efficiency that we strive for in our buildings, I think if we look at almost every building we've had, we've made substantial progress in making our buildings more energy-efficient, relying less on fossil fuels, still relying on those by using less of those fossil fuels. I think in the future that we have a real opportunity to look at renewable energy. The board continues to look at that, that we can move from using fossil fuels to using renewable energy. Certainly think that our finances, we've addressed those. As we've looked in our last week or so, we've looked at our reserves and they're very healthy, and I think that we're moving forward to meet the needs of the citizens of Blackhawk County, but to also continue to address the responsibility of doing this in a financial manner that does not put the county in jeopardy. Our bond readings have been good, so I think we've done well on those part. Country View has certainly been an issue since I've been on the board. We've strived to make that facility the best possible facility we could for the individuals that are residents there. There's a lot of factors that come into play where we had substantial reserves that we There's a lot of factors that come into play where we had substantial reserves that we put into that facility, and those dwindled away because of how the reimbursement for the Medicaid took place. And I think that decision to turn this over to a private sector for them to provide quality service is a responsible thing for the county to do, and long-term, I think it's best for the residents at Country View. Lastly, I'd like to thank the staff of Blackhawk County, the elected officials in Blackhawk County, all the department heads, and fellow Board members for doing what I think has always been the right thing to do. When I ran for this position, I wanted to emphasize that when, while making public policy, it's important how you treat people, because I think it really matters. Thank you again for this opportunity.
I'd just like to highlight a couple of things, Frank, that you did say. You were very instrumental in the floods of '08 and '16. You helped a lot of people. You've also helped a lot of people by putting the Sub-Acute Center in, the Adult Stabilization Center, and like you said, all the miles of roads and bridge construction we've done, and energy efficiency we've done in the courthouse, we've got a, we had a hell of a team in place, and I'm sorry to see you go. And with that, I'd like to present to Frank Maxman with grateful appreciation of his years of service.
Thank you. I guess it's that time of the year to wish everyone a happy New Year and not dwell. It's been a great experience for me, and move forward and find good things to work on in the future, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
I'd like to add too, I want to wish you the best in this next phase of your life, whatever that is. I know it's going to be something good, and you're going to be helping the public. Your presence and your dedication will be missed, and for that, I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yeah, you've shown nothing but professionalism up here, Frank, since you've been here, and I noticed on the black it says retirement, I know that's not true. You don't retire from anything, so we do wish you the best, and you've always got a home up here at the courthouse. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for all of your guidance in my first two years in office. You've set a good model to follow, and I'm going to keep pushing solar for you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
And don't anybody forget, 2:00 Friday to 4:00 Friday, Frank's retirement downstairs.
Reception.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.